Chang, Fontleroy, Kurtz, Marsh, Randolph, Shabaz, Small. We have forms, please let us stand and pledge allegiance to the Constitution. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have a vocation by Reverend Victoria N. Margate, Community Church.
It's an honor to be here with all of you. Let us pray. Eternal God, we thank you for this opportunity tonight to come together and serve our city of Atlantic City. We thank you for all those who willingly serve the people of our wonderful municipality. We ask your blessing and wisdom for the mayor and all council persons gathered here. We pray that your spirit will be upon each one of them and guide them so that they can continue to represent and proudly serve Atlantic City. Bless this time together tonight, the ideals and the work. May all efforts be directed toward the good of all our citizens, particularly through good examples of justice and fair-mindedness and diligence in service. We ask this in the name of our God Creator, Redeemer, and Sustainer of us all. Amen.
Before we get, excuse my voice, members here in public, before we get to the business at hand, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council, we'd like to wish you condolences on your projects. So I must say that. Thank you.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required by law by the City Clerk sending to the press and the Philadelphia Inquirer and the Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2019, and published on January 7th, 2019. A list of the meetings for the Council of the City of Atlantic City, including the meeting schedule for January 16th, 2019 at 5:00 PM, and the Hank Tyner Council Chambers, Room 206, City Hall, 1301 Baccarat Boulevard. Also, a copy of said notice was posted by the City Clerk on the bulletin board, main lobby, first floor, on the same date. All of the aforementioned complies with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera, known as the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Law, and NJSA 40:69A-179. This is a regular council meeting of the City Council of Atlantic City. Before we begin, please be aware of our rules in this chamber. All persons are to be seated unless all seats are filled, in which case you may stand against the wall in orderly fashion. We are asking that all gentlemen remove their hats. All persons are to remain quiet during these proceedings, this is so that everyone is able to hear what is going on. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silence. No one shall speak unless they are invited to do so by the Council President. Shouting, interrupting, speaking out of turn, or acting disorderly in any fashion will not be tolerated, and anyone doing so will be removed from the meeting. When and if you are invited to the microphone to speak, please state your name and address. You will be allotted three minutes for comment. Please respect the time for other persons and end your speech within the three minutes allowed. If it is your intention to ask a question of council, you will be permitted to ask a maximum of two questions. Your questions are to be clearly stated, and after the questions are asked, you are to take your seat. The Council President will determine if the question pending answered and by whom. Finally, please understand that there will be no personal attacks or name calling. If you do so, your time will immediately be cut short, and you may be asked to leave. Council President?
Yes.
Would you like to do reports and recommendations from the mayor, committee reports, or...
No, we're going to suspend it, we're going to deal with Resolution 26 first.
This is a resolution to recognize Michelle MacArthur for her outstanding efforts on behalf of the tenants of New York Avenue Apartments.
Move it.
Second.
Map of motion.
Move it.
Moved by Shabaz.
Second.
Second by Randolph.
Whereas Michelle MacArthur is employed as the social worker at New York Avenue Apartments located at 233 North New York Avenue in Atlantic City. And whereas, as the coordinator of events, programs, and activities for the tenants of New York Avenue Apartments, Michelle shows great dedication and compassion. And whereas, as an advocate for residents of New York Avenue Apartments, Michelle is determined to improve the quality of life for all tenants, and helps to make Atlantic City a better place to live. And whereas, Michelle is devoted and completely committed to the tenants. She is inspired and energized and goes over and above what is expected to ensure the needs and concerns of tenants that are properly addressed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby recognizes, commends, and salutes Michelle MacArthur for her outstanding efforts, and extends sincere appreciation for her commitment and willingness to improve the quality of life for all tenants of the New York Avenue Apartments. Chang?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabaz?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's settled, and you're affirmative, and we do have a presentation. Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations. I wanted to say thank you to...
Get the microphone.
I want to say thank you this evening, I'm so nervous, but this is my first time, and when I first walked into the building, they said, "You can do it." And here I am, and this is for the team, and thank you, council.
Yes.
And thanks for the surprise.
Do you want the paper to put in? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports and recommendations?
Just morning.
We will now have the swearing-in of our civilian advisory board by Judge Billy Moore.
All rise. All rise. Judge Moore, that was me who said, "All rise."
Judge Moore, that was me who said, "All rise."
We have one.
I have one.
Advisory Board, if you can come up front.
He's an outside consultant.
He's an outside consultant.
Mr. Irvin.
Big guys in the back.
Council President, Members of Council, Mr. Mayor, the Citizens Advisory Board members are as follows. Mr. Frank Irvin, Mr. Farouk Hussein, Mr. Delmar Hamilton, Ms. Constance Daze Chapman, Mr. Ron Pugh, Mr. Jeffrey Rosenberg, Mr. Charles Garrett, Ms. Sharon Alloy, Ms. Sheila Holt Freeman, Mr. Tom Lemain, Mr. Christian Moreno Rodriguez, and Ms. Joyce Malina.
You guys raise your right hand for me, and repeat after me, say aye and state your name.
Aye, Frank Irvin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
I will bear true faith and allegiance
and to the governments established in the United States
and to the governments established in the United States
and this state
and this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
and that I will faithfully
faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly
and justly
perform all the duties as a member of the Citizens Advisory Board
perform all the duties as a member of the Citizens Advisory Board
for a term of one year
for a term of one year
beginning January 1st, 2019
beginning January 1st, 2019
and expiring December 31st, 2019
and expiring December 31st, 2019
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God
Congratulations. First meeting downstairs, gentlemen. Good to see you. Judge Moore? Good to see you. I have a question. Was that her original out date? Yes. Okay. Yes. I don't understand the terms. Why were you on that? Due to a conflict of interest, 25, 70, and 71, I will be abstaining. All right, that's more of your agenda?
Okay, so for 70 and 71, just for clarification, they are not filling the unexpired terms of each other?
No.
Okay. Okay, we have a presentation by Sports Farm Foundation and Charity Kings.
Sports Farm and Charity.
State of the nation.
For the record, yes.
DT Go Henry 267, Jeter Street, Cleveland, New Jersey, 07712.
Yeah, I'm Henry, president of Charity Kings. First of all, first and foremost, thanks for having me today, I'm not going to keep you guys, I left the agenda. But again, my name is Coach Tico, I'm the director and founder of the Sports Farm Foundation, as well as the Sports Farm All-American Games, and what we do is tutor, mentor, train, SAT prep, as well as college tour. We host games and as well as national showcases all across the country. Last year, for example, last year, we held it at Las Vegas, and we had over 300 athletes representing 32 states and four countries. This year, we intend to hold it in Atlantic City, and we ask the city for support, regardless of what that support may be, whether it's financial, whether it's resources, or whether it's in kind. I'm sorry. Okay. So I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Either way, we expect over 500 families to come down Easter weekend, from April 17th to April 20th. Now, five, those 500 families are just student athletes. Obviously, those student athletes are going to come with support, same way they did in Las Vegas. So they're going to come with their mom, dad, sister, brother, whatever the kids may be. This is an plus of, you know, of people that's coming to this city, and again, we just ask you for your support. Also, with that being said, again, I mentioned what we do, as far as the touring, the mentoring, the SAT prep, as well as the college tours, you know. And upon bringing this event here in our backyard to Atlantic City, we are allowing 100 student athletes from Atlantic City to join or be a part of it. This way, we can give them the necessary resources that they need to grow onto that next level and play against elite athletes from all across the country. That's something that, you know, inner-city, a lot of inner-city youth, they don't get a chance to participate in events like this. So, you know, again, by us bringing it here to Atlantic City, bringing it back to New Jersey, you know, we have regional showcases all across the country, and those kids will come here and see the best thing that this show has to offer. Thank you.
And I just want to chime in, at our meeting with CRDA, two months ago, this was an agenda item, and they came to CRDA for support. I know that there are negotiations with Hard Rock for the use of the facility and hotel
We're gonna be putting barriers there. And we do have civilian cameras that are located on the boardwalk that need to be cleaned. We're gonna go take that to Creeter, because they need to be cleaned. And I don't see any reason why they need to be cleaned. So that's gonna be on as governmental affairs. I have two resolutions on tonight. I would hope that we could support them. And that's for the fire department. That's to improve the emergency service for mold mediation in all of the firehouses. And a resolution to purchase breathing apparatus. So that's my report, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Right, revenue on finance, we met on January 7th. On the agenda, you know, for approval, through the purchasing office, is a resolution authorized the city of Atlantic City to go out under the cooperative pricing agreement with the city of Ocean City. That way, it'd allow us to give it a cheaper price, items such as sand, wood, fencing. From the tax collector's office, there's a resolution to adjust and correct property assessment of various properties. There's a resolution to refund the tax sales certificate. A resolution to cancel a tax sales certificate from 2016 to 2018 tax lien sale. And a suggestion was made by the tax collector, Casey Johnson, to make it easier for residents in an event that it's a long line or it's one of those days where someone can't get here in time when the tax collector's office closed, to put a drop box to be stationed at the front desk, where if someone's rushing from work and gets here at 4:05 and the office is closed before, instead of trying to come back the next day, or when they can, they can drop it into the drop box. And the tax collector will check it several times a week. And on Friday, she'll, you know, clean it out to make sure there's nothing left over the weekend. So I think that's another good sign that we're trying to be understanding for our taxpayers. We have a couple of workman compensation items that will be entertained in executive session. The tenth budget is basically a lot of grants, fifteen thousand from the NJEDA, twelve thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents for drunk driving enforcement, a million dollars from the Department of Transportation for Chelsea and Albany Avenue, and forty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-one cents for recycling tonnage grain. Also, the 2018 retirees sick time buyout is on the agenda for the month, from September to December of 2018, for fifty-one thousand, three hundred dollars and twelve cents. And lastly, on the agenda is to delete some codes, to delete some titles from the city code for the clerk's office. And that's my report for revenue on finance. And there also are items on the the items on the agenda under administration and governmental affairs is a zoning board appointment, three, well, one MUA appointment and two adjustments, two MUA appointments, and the appointment of the new planning director, the planning and development director for the city of Atlantic City. And that's my report. And anyone else?
Can I say something?
Yeah, this is, this is a new year, 2019, right? Let's look, let's look back when we discussed last year. Basically, it was, basically, you know, what I'm saying is that the speeding problem in the city, especially over Fairman Avenue where the boat houses. I'd like to report there was another hit and run. And we, we just, everybody was on board with speed bumps, wobble stick, drips, and maybe a stop sign or a traffic light. I mean, I just wanna, I just wanna know where, where are we with this? Especially cars are being sideswiped almost every week on that quarter.
Anyone who'd like to answer that?
Uh, Councilman, I will get with you after the meeting this evening. I will have a lengthy discussion with you about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and I would like to make an amendment before we actually get to the votes. So by that point, we'll know there seems to be a misunderstanding for Resolutions 70 and 71. I'm gonna start with 70. I mean, that's the appointment of Patricia Bailey to the MUA. She is currently a member of the MUA, so we're not appointing her. What we did was adjust the, you know, the terms. So she is an alternate going to a regular member, and Mr. McGeadigan is a regular member going to the alternate. If you can look in the body on the now therefore in the third paragraph, where it says expiring term, on the agenda has January 31st, 2020. Can you correct that to January 31st, 2023? And on the next resolution, Resolution Number 71, the same thing. He is a member of the MUA, which is changing the designation. And can you correct the correct term under the third whereas? Where it says January 31st, 2023 to January 31st, 2020? Thank you. It's more the agenda?
No, I have a question. I have a question. Um, was that her original out date?
Yes. Okay, yes. I thought it was the terms.
Why were you on that? Due to a conflict of interest, 25, 70, and 71, I will be abstaining.
All right, it's more the agenda?
Okay, so for 70 and 71, just for clarification, they are not filling the unexpired terms of each other?
No.
Okay, we have a presentation by Sports Farm Foundation and Charity Kings.
Sports Farm Charity. Stateman A. For the record, yes. DT Go Henry, 267 J Street, Cleveland, New Jersey, 07712.
Yeah, I'm Henry, president of Charity Kings.
First of all, first and foremost, thanks for having me today. I'm not gonna keep you guys, you know, on the agenda. But again, my name is Coach Tico, I'm the director and founder of the Sports Farm Foundation, as well as, as well as the Sports Farm All-American Games. And what we do is tutor, mentor, train SAT prep, as well as college tour. We host games and as well as national showcases all across the country. Last year, for example, last year, we held, we held it at Las Vegas. And we had over 300 athletes representing 32 states and four countries. This year, we intend to hold it in Atlantic City, and we ask the city for support, regardless of what that support may be, whether it's financial, whether it's resources, or whether it's in kind. I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Either way, we expect over 500 families to come down Easter weekend from April 17th to April 20th. Now, five, those 500 families are just student athletes. Obviously, those student athletes are gonna come with support, same way they did in Las Vegas. So they're gonna come with their mom, dad, sister, brother, whatever the kids may be. This is an plus of, you know, of people that's coming to this city. And again, we just ask you for your support. Also, with that being said, again, I mentioned what we do, as far as the touring, the mentoring, the SAT prep, as well as the college tours, you know. And upon bringing this event here in our backyard to Atlantic City, we are allowing a hundred student athletes from Atlantic City to join or be, be a part of it. This way, we can give them the necessary resources that they need to grow onto that next level and play against elite athletes from all across the country. That's something that, you know, inner-city, a lot of inner-city youth, they don't get a chance to participate in events like this. So, you know, again, by us bringing it here to Atlantic City, bringing it back to New Jersey, you know, we have regional showcases all across the country, and those kids can come here and see the best thing that this show has to offer. Thank you. And I just wanna chime in at our meeting with CRDA. Two months ago, this was an agenda item, and they came to CRDA for support. I know that they're in negotiations with Hard Rock for the use of the facility and hotel rooms. And also, they had their meeting with MEAC about, you know, some support as well. This is similar to, you know, those basketball fans out there. This is similar to the AAU basketball, where, you know, it's a seven-on-seven showcase as well as an All-American game. And it's, you know, it's a big event. Last year, they were in Las Vegas. I know they hosted tournaments before in Atlanta at the Georgia Dome, or then Georgia Dome. I think they were in Mercedes-Benz Stadium, last year, the new, the new stadium. And I just think that anytime that we can offer positive entertainment options and expose our kids to being recruited on a college level, I think it's a win-win in anything that the city, you know, can do. And I'm sure that everyone up on this diet can agree, anything that we can do within our means to support it. Particularly, and one thing we told them, that it was important, it was very important, that if they wanna come here and run programs, that it's important that our children in the city of Atlantic City, you know, aren't paying any fees to be involved in it. And they were very understanding in that and realizing that if this is really gonna be, if this is really gonna go to the next level, it's gonna take them to support the Atlantic City community as well. So later on in the, on the, on the agenda, you'll see a resolution of support, which I would ask all my colleagues to support. And, you know, hopefully, the negotiation with CRDA, MEAC, and Hard Rock, you know, can come to for wishing and any other support that you need. You know, we're here to have you back. We've never done a day in, and three, two, two of them came through today. So we, we, um, Hard Rock, the Hard Rock Hotel will be our host hotel. So what's the, what was, you had any other news you wanna bring? You said two or the three. Now I'm curious.
No, we're just waiting.
Okay, I just backed back.
Don't let everything out, that's right.
He just took a shot at us. He said the third is the city. I'm gonna have a motion to rescind that resolution. I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
May we have resolutions of recognition?
Yes. As we do every meeting, we're going to try to identify the representatives that are here. Is there anyone here from the family of Ed Colanzey? Anyone here from Electric Vehicles? We did, Nick Arthur. Anyone here from the family of Savitz Salvatore Cantanese? Any women's marchers here?
They're here.
Just help me out, especially. I, I don't, believe me, I know how to ask for help. Is anyone here from the family of Cat, Cat the Red Bentley? Anyone here from the family of Barbara Hudgens? Anyone here from the Holocaust Memorial? From the family of Ms. Geneva Hatcher Burrows? Anyone here from the Boys, Boys and Girls Club? All right, before
You forgot to ask, is anyone here from the Church Farm Legion? He's back here. He got his head.
Before we, before we move forward, in grouping these resolutions, I'm gonna take, ask my colleagues and the members of the audience if they can indulge. We lost two Atlantic City legends recently, and Ed Colanzey and, you know, former councilwoman Barbara Hudgens. And Ed Colanzey was a longtime commissioner and a member of the MUA for many, many, many years. So at this time, I would like to ask everyone to, you know, just have a moment of silence. Is that official? I'm not, 'cause I was
Blink.
No, I'm sorry, that's not official. I'm just saying official. No. I got in trouble last week. I don't want to give you that. All right, so we'll have a moment of silence for Ms. Hudgens and Mr. Colanzey at this time. Thank you. And now, I would like to have a motion to group Resolutions 21, 23, 39, 48, 63, 65, 66, and 67. Have a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Randolph, seconded by Shabazz.
Resolution 21 is resolution condolence, recognizing the legacy of Edmund J. Colanzey. Resolution 23 is a supportive for Electric Vehicles. 39 is condolence to the family of Salvatore A. Cantanese. Resolution 48, condolence to the family of Catherine Bentley. Resolution 63, condolence to the family of Barbara L. Hudgens. Resolution 65, supporting the Holocaust Memorial in Atlantic City. Resolution 66, condolence to the family of Geneva Hatcher Burrows. Resolution 67 is recognizing donors to the Boys and Girls Club of Atlantic City. Chang?
Yes.
Funtleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative. Okay, we now have Resolution 41, and this is a resolution to recognize the organizers, participants, and supporters of the Atlantic City Women's March.
Move it.
Have a motion? Second. Have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Randolph, seconded by Shabazz. And can we group 40, 41, and 43? It's the same organization.
41 and 43 grouped together?
Yes.
And Resolution 43 recognizes the members of the Atlantic City Women's March Steering Committee. Okay, Resolution 41, whereas the Atlantic City Women's March Steering Committee has organized the Atlantic City Women's March to be held Saturday, January 19th, 2019, to honor the life legacy of Fannie Lou Hamer, an icon of the American Civil Rights Movement. And whereas thousands of women and men from local area and across the state are expected to participate in the march to reaffirm the goals and beliefs of Fannie Lou Hamer. And whereas, at the 1964 Democratic Convention held in Atlantic City, Fannie Lou Hamer famously coined the phrase, "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired", referring to the obstacles to achieve civil rights and social justice in America. And whereas, the struggle for equality, social justice, and equal treatment still continues for women in our nation, and the gap in equal pay for equal work, proper press representation in governmental positions, and gender equality is yet to be achieved, and the fight for women to make decisions that affect their bodies is still ongoing. And whereas, the Atlantic City Women's March serves to rekindle and advance the vision and legacy of Fannie Lou Hamer and inspire the and energize participants, and now therefore be resolved that the Council of City of Atlantic City hereby recognizes and commends the organizers, participants, and supporters of the Atlantic City Women's March, and salutes their commitment to promote civil rights and social justice. Be it further resolved that the Council of City of Atlantic City honors the women who proudly served as Atlantic City Council members. Louise Pallanteri, Barbara Hudgens, Rosalind Norrell-Nance, Patty Marshall, Cassandra McCall-Clark, Stephanie Dixon, and Joyce Malino, and extends sincere thanks and appreciation for their commitment, dedication, and devotion. Resolution 43 recognizes the members of the Women's March Steering Committee. Whereas, the Atlantic City Women's March Steering Committee has organized the Atlantic City Women's March to be held Saturday, January 19th, 2019 on the boardwalk at Kennedy Plaza. Whereas, the devoted members of the Atlantic City Women's March Steering Committee contribute their time, talent, energy, and countless volunteer hours to ensure the success of this historic march. And whereas, the Atlantic City Women's March honors the life and legacy of Fannie Lou Hamer, and an icon of the American Civil Rights Movement, and also recognizes the women who proudly served as council members for the city of Atlantic City. Louise Pallanteri, Barbara Hudgens, Rosalind Norrell-Nance, Patty Marshall, Cassandra McCall-Clark, Stephanie Dixon, and Joyce Malino. And whereas, the Atlantic City Women's March Steering Committee is comprised of the following members. Shalonda Austin, Estina Baker, Ashley Bennett, Lena Cohen, Yolanda Cooper, Stephanie Dixon, Tamika Gilbert Floyd, Charmaine Gunter-Gary, Sheila Harvey, Fatima Hayward, Barbara Hudgens, Bashira Khan, Sierra Logan, Yolanda Melville, Antoinette Miles, Joyce Malino, Maisha Scudder, Pamela Thomas, Digna Townsend, and Thelma Witherspoon. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby recognizes and commends the members of the Atlantic City Women's March Steering Committee, and salutes their dedicated and devoted efforts to organize the historic Atlantic City Women's March to be held January 19th, 2019. Chang?
Yes.
Funtleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative, but we do have certificates.
One up.
Yeah, okay, I see Thelma, Digna? Pam Thomas, Maisha? Antoinette Miles? Antoinette? Yolanda? Sorry, it's backwards. Sierra?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bashira? Bashira, thank you. Fatima? Sheila Harvey? Fatima?
Yep.
Thank you. Charmaine Gunter-Gary? Hi, Charmaine. Sheila? Oh.
Tamika?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Cooper? Okay. Lena Cohen?
Hi.
Thank you. Ashley?
Estina Baker?
Thank you.
Shalonda Austin?
Thank you.
Digna Townsend?
Hi.
Thank you.
Pam Thomas? Joyce? And Antoinette Miles? We do have one for Barbara Hudgens. Joyce will take that. Thank you all.
Pre-holding, you wanna say a word?
Thank you. Thank you for honoring this amazing steering committee. We actually organized this Women's March in less than 40 days. And if it wasn't for their commitment to a vision that I had, to honor the legacy of the activism that is here in Atlantic City, this would not have happened. And so I thank you, I think, the Atlantic City NAACP, I think the city of Atlantic City, for partnering with us and for helping us. At this time, we have now 15 buses coming throughout the state, and over 1,000 people set to march on Saturday. We have the Lieutenant Governor as our keynote speaker, and we have the award-winning actress from the Fannie Lou Hamer Museum in Mississippi coming to do the reenactment of the 1964 Democratic National Convention speech. So everyone is invited. It is nonpartisan. It is free. Please come out and support.
Mr. President, this is my question. Mr. President. Uh, two quick announcements with women who happen to be involved with the march and the activity. On Friday, the 18th, at 11 o'clock, Shalonda Austin is gonna be the winner of the Martin Luther King Award from the county, the county building, this Friday at 11 o'clock. And Monday, at 12 o'clock, Yolanda Melville is gonna be the keynote speaker for the NAACP Martin Luther King Program. And our theme this year is women and the civil rights movement. Thank you.
We now have public comment on agenda items and Good and Welfare. Charles Goodman?
Oh, no, he's not here.
He's out in the hallway.
He's gotta be somewhere. Please get him.
We should, he gotta be somewhere.
Gotta be somewhere.
Next speaker.
Cheryl Tibbey?
I apologize. I was getting some information for my kids, bro. This thing impressed me. All right, good afternoon. I noticed this, when everybody gets their board, whatever, they leave. That advisory group should have stayed here, find out the functions of the, of the council and how everything goes and what applies to them.
You don't know what they have to do.
No, I already talked to a couple of them. I already talked to a couple of them. Okay, so but anyway, serious back to us. Mr. Chang, what you were saying was correct. I remember last year, Paul from Bucket Works was here talking about doing not only speed bump strips, all of that sort of stuff. And I don't know, everything we bring up, we never have another meeting that says, in six months, we're gonna revisit some of the things that were brought up. Like, I keep bringing up this privatization. I found out that this private company now, snow removal wasn't in the, in the budgeted, in the contract that they got. And they did a great job, by the way. Snow removal for this first snow was a great job in Atlantic City. I will compliment on that. But the cost, we don't know the cost that's coming with it at all. So that's extra to the privatization. The other thing, in terms of following up, and I keep laboring the points over and over, people might get tired of it, but I don't get answers or results. The paving of the streets, I know that's a joint project with the state, Creeter, and the city finding the money. But in meanwhile, I almost broke my axle trying to avoid a hole going down New York Avenue, avoiding one hole and end up going into another hole. So we would like to see when some answers are gonna be, before, you know, the suits start coming in for, for the cars as well. And the last thing for the boardwalk, I keep going back to this. This administrator, Mr. Briscoe, didn't even allow police cars on the boardwalk because of the damage that it did with the weight of the cars to the boards, and the nails stick up, and then somebody trip and fall, and there's another suit. Or I should open all the suits we pay out with it up and see how much, that budget alone might be too much. But anyway, thank you for the new season. Thank you for the advisory board. I just hope that they can press up on and, and bring the complaints of the citizens to Chief Wagon. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your time. I made it within 27 seconds.
All right. It's an outstanding job.
I'll remember not to do that.
We give you a credit.
We all to a great 2019.
I got a credit for next time.
Cheryl Tibbey? Are you gonna do that now?
Good evening.
Good evening. I wanna say good evening to Mayor Gilliam and President Council, Small, and Councilman. I just wanna read this letter. You know, I, I wanna tell you, I don't want you to get rid of me. You can get rid of me, because I grew up in a family where I was never wanted. So at 18, I came here to Atlantic City. Atlantic City became my mother and father. And because of that, I was able to work so many wonderful jobs, construction, accounting, bookkeeping. I was the angel at St. David's. I worked on I worked on the boardwalk, cleaning peanuts, I shut clams. I danced a little bit at Buddy's Three, I did construction, I put up traffic signals in Margate, and I worked in social services, continuum of care, I was on the Section Eight Advisory Board. And now God is blessing me for all the good things I've done over the thirty years with this miracle, and it truly is a miracle that I'm awarded and have access to use this funding, this funding. So I just, I, you know, I grew up, I was the mom of my kids, my grandkids, my great-grandkids and everything. And I was married three times, it didn't work out, I still love men. But still, I'm coming to you to be my father and help me oversee this. And these are projects that God has given me to build up Atlantic City and make it very, very self-sufficient. Okay, so I want you to consider, it's not your money, it's not your bond, it's mine. And I want to utilize it here, I want to do it in a proficient, professional way and have oversight. We are family, and I don't believe in the force. Okay? I have the projects, I have a youth global initiative where youth work in several ventures, the House of Prayer for All Nations, I'm on Facebook as Israel to bring thousands of people. They want to get to know God, they want to have a live relationship with Him. So a place in Atlantic City apart from the casinos is a beautiful thing. All churches can be involved if they want to. I'm going to talk to Pastor Ezekiel and Reverend Days, as well as the Fellowship of Churches as well. The Veterans, Holistic Healing and Hotel, that's on Pacific Avenue. And that's already have fifty living residents in a ninety-nine room hotel. I'm a holistic healer, I'm sixty-one, I've been in fifteen car accidents, back crushed, neck messed up a few times paralyzed, and I'm still here to give back. Okay, I need some help too. I also applied for a tribal assistance bridge. Who can I call? Who will work with me?
Councilman Shabazz?
I know that we will appoint you.
You'll definitely work with him. Yes, he will.
Wait, 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 excuse me, excuse me, your time is up.
Yes, Godfather Shabazz.
Yes, Godfather Shabazz. After the meeting, I'm going to appoint him as Council President to let your project through. He will be the point person for the entire Atlantic City government. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Council, yes.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we're going to take a break at this point, and Mr. Michael Epps will give a brief presentation.
Now, I wanted to turn, uh, council, I hope that you forgive my back if I turned sideways. Not wanting to turn my back on the audience. I appreciate Council President Small asking me to say a few words about the position to which I've been appointed by the Lieutenant Governor. So I'm sure everyone knows about the Johnson Report, the initiatives that have come out of Johnson Report. One of the suggestions was the development of the Project Office. And I was appointed by the Lieutenant Governor to be the Executive Director of the Project Office. We're going to call it the Atlantic City Initiatives Project Office. We're in the process of getting stacked up, and we're working with the Executive Council and the council established by Lieutenant, I mean, established by the governor in its executive order to have all cabinet-level members designated a representative to work on Atlantic City's Senate issues. So we're going to work on the initiatives that are set forth in the agenda, working with the Executive Council and working with the Cabinet Council, and hopefully we can do some things in Atlantic City that brings together the stakeholders, breaks down the silos, and takes some of the weight off of your board, I mean, your backs so that some folks who are community citizens can come together and do things for you and with you. So hopefully we can coordinate some of those things and make things happen for Atlantic City in twenty nineteen and going forward. So thank you, we're looking forward to this work that we have to do, I'm excited. I'm glad to be back in my hometown and to be able to do something like this, it gives me a great honor. I told everybody, I'm the biggest cheerleader for Atlantic City you might find. I'm sure someone will argue that they are, but I certainly think that I am. So I look forward to it, I'm glad to have this opportunity, and I look forward to working with council and with mayor and the state folks, and hopefully we can get some positive things going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing on with public comment, Friends in Action.
Hello, Mayor, hello, council, hello, everybody in the audience. I would just like to once again thank everyone. To give you all an update as to what happened during Christmas. Beginning with, it started off, I'm like, prior to that, the councilman Tivit dressed up as Santa Claus along with the fire department, then go to Venice Park School, the Gate Avenue School, Chelsea Avenue, and also Star of C giving out chocolate and gifts to the children. The children were enamored, they were in the hallways, sitting on Santa's lap, holding up, he gonna see them at Christmas time. It was so much joy to see the kids have Santa, and the fire department with, and they had members dressed up like Marshall from Paw Patrol, and they were just going crazy, and it was so good to see them. I said, following behind that was at the Irish Pub. They want to thank Kathy Burke who opened up her doors, the fire department, and the Friends in Action, and helping out over a hundred children with toys that were given to them. Along with that, there were coats that the Journal Assembly gave us, and we were able to give out to needy families coats. One family was literally standing there freezing, they had none. The mother and father were so happy that they were giving coats for the adults and the children. And it actually brought tears to everybody's eyes, and we saw the children sitting there shivering. We followed that up with, of course, the Secret Santa workshop, that was on the twenty-fourth. Thank Chief Henry White, the police officers Kane, and to give you all an idea, Atlantic City had over three hundred children that were receiving toys that we were collecting. I said, we did Ocean City, Pleasantville, Sacredville, Maze Landing, Lindooraw, Clementon, Galloway, and Camden. We did over four hundred and fifty to almost five hundred children with coats and toys for the holiday. Well, that's Christmas. Now, gentlemen, we have hometown heroes. February twenty-second will be hometown heroes. The board that has been chosen to represent and pick the members, Jody Burrows, Dr. John Regis, Elvis K. Davis, Elizabeth Castro, Cynthia Yedder, Frank Bechtel, Torres Maker, Kathy Burke, Farish Namor, Basheera Khan, Sheila Harvey. These individuals will be those that y'all can talk to, to find people to be honored. Council members, y'all all there, be glad to raise some nominations for hometown heroes, February twenty-second. Thank you. If all are going to be at Dante Hall once again, I said I'd like, we hope to see all y'all there. Again, honoring people just because. Even if they're frozen now and not later, we do so because they're built that way. That's what hometown hero is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Mackard?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I spoke last month about the veterans vending ordinance for food trucks, and I was just wondering how that was going. It was, the ordinance reads that the food trucks are supposed to operate like an ice cream truck, and food trucks today have fryers and stuff like that, which would cause a health hazard and a fire hazard to do. I just wanted to know, we talked about getting that on the agenda this month. I just wanted to know how that was going with that.
Yeah, I actually want to say, in the transition between the years, we dropped the ball on your item. We discussed about four things and we didn't, so we're going to have to get that on the February committee. So we meet two weeks before the next council meeting. And in fact, if you're available, we'll give you the time slot, you can come and present, you know, your findings. And we'll do that in conjunction with, if the director can help us, with a review of what we have on the code, and then we'll have a discussion in committee, and you'll definitely have it resolved before the next council meeting. I apologize.
Thank you.
That's that, your committee. Yes. Thank you.
Linda Steele?
I think she's in the hall.
Oh, shoot.
Oh, no, she is.
Oh, my goodness.
Been here in a while.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Well, happy New Year to each of you. Well, I'm here to wish you a healthy, happy New Year, prosperous one hopefully. And I'm back in town. I wanted to say, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Epps. I think it's just great that we have somebody that is from Atlantic City, that knows Atlantic City, and we just look forward to assisting him in any way that we can. So the only negative thing I want to say to you this evening is that, could you please have someone clean up around City Hall? I have never seen it this filthy, all that mess outside. It needs to be cleaned every day. It's, we're presenting ourselves in a way that we should not be.
That should include the people that reside there after six, as well as during the course of the day, and I agree with you, because I've come in here days and...
I haven't seen it like this before, it's not good. So good luck to you and God bless you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
And welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Dave Davis?
The French Foreign Legion, my man.
Foreign Legion is here, sir.
Yes, sir, where's that hat? Don't start it. There it is, my man, happy review.
Marty, do you have the package?
Hey, Tom, ready? I was told ethically I'm not allowed to accept gifts.
Well, can you open it? Just to show a tell, and then I'll take it back home, because that's part of the show and tell thing on this. Yeah.
You can open it.
I was hoping Marty was going to open it because I wrapped it up for about thirty minutes. Now, let's see, they took, let's see, they took my bayonet away from me downstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ah-ha. Yeah. Well, they got that, they got my machete last week, so. Now, this is what I was going to give to Mr. Small. And the hat's off. And let's see, this off, and let's see, we done lost two minutes. Now, in the Atlantic City Times, they have the opinion page. And at the very bottom, it says, "Thought for the Day," and a couple of weeks ago, I spotted one, and I said, man, Marty's going to love this one. The thought for the day is, frankly, I'm suspicious of anyone who has a strong opinion on a complicated issue. And so I spent a couple of hours today putting this together for you. And now I can't, can't give it to the man. Well, I've been carrying this around, this is the original copy for about, I've been carrying it around for about three weeks, and it's in my wallet, and I look at it, and it's marked Opinions, and I pull it out, and I said, now, Mr. Small, he's got to have this. Is there any way we could bend a rule or something? That's it. Now, on the, on this other issue, is there anybody here from Public Works? Is there any representative here from Public Works? Once a week, I walk from the library to the post office. Now, they put in brand-new sidewalks. And when I, I'm seventy-one years old, so when I'm walking, I'm always looking down because I don't want to trip and fall down and break my wrist or something. And I just want to tell somebody from Public Works, because I've been following that thing, and they have done a beautiful job, those sidewalks are just like a billiard table. And I guess that's about it, Marty. And, Mr. Mayor, good seeing you, good seeing you, good seeing you. I'm going to hang this in my office. And it's very interesting to come here once a month. That's it, all right. Excuse me.
You have one for him to keep in his pocket, if he were like he does?
I'll tell you what, I will give to Marty the original. That's the original, it came out of the paper, and carry it with you. Because, man, I tell you, you sitting here, you got to deal with that. French Foreign Legion is finished.
All right, all right, sir. Is that an original hat? That's original, isn't it?
Sir, I'll tell you what, if you got about a half a tick, this hat, if you look at the very front of it, this is called the Legionnaire Saharian. Now, this comes from the Sahara, the legionnaires that were in the Sahara, they were disbanded in nineteen sixty-two. And if you look at this hat on the inside, it says Marseille, France. Now, when I was leaving the French Foreign Legion, I met this man, and he gave me this hat. And that's it.
Thank you for the history.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Where's Mr. Tivit?
Your time is up.
Motion, Matt?
The sweater guy, my man.
On January first, I thought there was a council meeting, and that day I had a jacket on to do it, but the doors were locked and nobody was going to do it. This is the meeting that day. On with home initiative, we, I've sent flyers to each one of you individually with messages, and we start our classes next Thursday over at St. Michael's Church. The address, the address is, was at Cromwell Hall at St. Michael's, technically Mississippi Avenue. I mentioned it for a couple of reasons, so it's a six-night, two-hour-per-evening class series on homeownership. And people can still come if they're interested, they call seven four eight, thirty-six hundred to register, and there's no charge for class, and hopefully they'll all have a better idea of the process and the cost of homeownership. I want to address something that Councilman Kurtz mentioned earlier. One of the things we've offered previously to different directors, planning and development here, as well as elsewhere, is we will be glad to do a seminar paradise for people who own properties that are in the repair designation, whatever, because there are different programs out there for refinance or purchase and rehab, whether it be primary, whether it be a second home, or whether it be investor. And some of the differences are based on what they call loan-to-value. So some of the people who think that they own properties and it can't be rehabbed, there are programs out there that demand that to be done so that they don't have to, they aren't forced to sell or give it up to the city. So please take advantage of that, we'll be glad to, we're not talking about a six-night, six-twelve-hour course series, we're at like a one or two hours, people can come, no charge, and we're glad to spend time explaining it to them and helping them, guiding them towards sources to help finance those renovations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Joyce Mollino?
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members. Mayor Michael Douglas. I'm glad, council, you reported Comcast and the Board of Ed. However, I have still not seen any council meetings shown, but Board of Ed meetings are being shown, so you may want to check into that. Question to the state, and I'm questioning the state because I cannot ask the mayor because he doesn't have hired privileges. Why are you hiring people to fill positions without giving the employees the opportunity to move up? And you're hiring these people, nothing against the people, hiring these people at a higher rate than the employees that are working here. We have worked without wages raises for more than four years, and people are being hired here that make more than we do. Couple of weeks ago, a young man was up here saying also that he did not get his check. Couple of weeks ago, a young man was up here saying also that he did not get his check. I thought that was a disgrace because I don't know who hired this company, and this company is not doing what it should do. It happened to me a couple of weeks ago. I did not receive my check, and I know how he felt because it took him more time than it took me to get mine. Who's checking up on the company? Those are my questions, and I'd like some answers.
Jason. Jason. Questions? What's that? Mr. BA?
Hi, Ms. Malino. We're going to move on, but I promise, we won't ignore your questions. We will get them answered as soon as the BA re-enters the chamber. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Saying, public portion is closed. Mr. BA? Do you have any questions for Ms. Malino? More on this.
The, the first question, first question was, why are persons being hired for positions without the employees, current employees, being given the chance to apply for or move up in those positions? I think I, did I state your question right, Ms. Malino? That was the first question.
Generally speaking, positions are advertised, and employees are given the opportunity to apply for those positions.
And your second question, I apologize because I can't.
Who's addressing the prime point issue? Folks not getting their paycheck.
I know it wasn't. Actually, I know it wasn't. Second question was asked to prime point.
The second question was, um, the second question was, they, what?
You said that the employee didn't get his check.
Yeah, that was, but, um, we worked with wages, raises for more than four years, and people not being hired that make more than we do. So, why did that happen? But the employees that did not get the check with prime point, too.
Okay, on the prime point issue, we're addressing that on a case-by-case basis, and there's generally scheduled an overall meeting to address some of those very specific issues with regard to employee paychecks and timing. All right, public portion is closed. Let's move the agenda, please.
We now have ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance 37 is an ordinance authorizing revocable license agreement with Ocean for the use of and to provide directional signage on public rightways.
Move it. Have a motion. Move it. Second. By Randolph, second by Shabazz. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Saying none, public portion is closed. Discussion? Saying none, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative. Ordinance 38 is authorizing an easement slash license agreement. This is regarding the Fisherman's Way car.
Have a motion. Move it. Second. By Randolph, second by Shabazz. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Saying none, public portion is closed. Discussion? Saying none, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative. We now have ordinances on first reading.
All right, ma'am, make a motion to group ordinance on first reading, regular resolutions. Move it. Moved by Randolph.
Second.
Second by Shabazz. Start with Shabazz.
I'm all right, but if I could say something about Resolution 55 quickly. Is that acceptable? Resolution 55, Mr. President, to you, to our colleagues, is the hiring of the Planning and Development Director Barbara Woolley Gibson Dillon, I'm sorry. I had the pleasure of talking to her, and I just wanted to highly recommend her to my colleagues. We need that position filled. I just, five real quick votes I wrote down. She's extremely qualified by virtue of her resume. She is accepting, committed to community engagement and involvement, which is something that we all feel strongly about. She's understanding of and committed to the time requirements of the position. She has belief in the potential of Atlantic City that we all have. And finally, Ms. President, she's a Rutgers graduate, which I think she'd recommend.
That's what I see. Mr. President, may I ask a question? Is she here?
Yes.
President, I, I'm going to apologize for being late. I currently work for Manalope. I came from there and blocked traffic for an hour and a half. I'm so sorry. I would have picked you up right after five.
All right, so, after the vote, which I was being lenient to my colleague to just let him discuss, I didn't know that he was going to give a PowerPoint presentation, but after the vote, we will introduce you to the vote.
I don't, I don't, so I turn you over. I don't know whether this is the appropriate time to say it enough. I just want to say that Bob Preston did outstanding job, has plans, and I'm sorry to see he didn't get the position, but I just want to thank him for all his years of service and all his expertise, and also all his being available to the community and all his being a part of the community. So, with that being said, I know he will continue to do a good job and continue, you know, faithfully on behalf of the community, but I just want to say he did outstanding job at a time we needed someone to step in. Okay?
I echo that. Thank you, Bob. Outstanding.
I'd like to co-sponsor under Planning and Development, Resolution 44, Resolution 59, Resolution 64, and then under Public Safety, Public Works, Co-Sponsor 46. That's all.
Yes, I would like to cast a no vote on 70, and that's all for me.
I think I took 25, 70, and 71 due to conflict interest of the State.
Chang? I'm good. Can I register a no vote on 25, please?
We'll be voting on Ordinance 1A, and this is an ordinance amending Chapter 57-9. This is regarding positions in the City Clerk Division. Resolution 40, 44, 58, 59, 60, 62, 64, 68, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36. For the record, 37 is being pulled, and this is the warrant to employees who retired. 38, 45, 52, 53, 54, 56, 22, 24. An amendment to 25, the name is John Devlin. 55, 70, terms changed, revision to that resolution, and revision to Resolution 71, changing the terms. 42, 46, 69, 27, 28, 47, 57, and 61. And noting the exceptions, a no vote on Resolution 25 by Councilman Fontleroy. No vote, Councilman Marsh, Resolution 70. Co-sponsoring, Councilman Kurtz, 44, 59, 64, and 46. Abstentions, Councilman Randolph, 25, 70, and 71. Chang?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative with the exceptions noted. We now have executives.
Before we go to executive session, we'll have a, you know, the group planning director, executive one.
First of all, thank you for your confidence. Thank you for your gracious introduction. I'm very familiar with Atlantic City. I came down here 35-years ago to work at Vicinus. I've always stayed in touch. It's always been a second home, and I appreciate the confidence that you have in me. I will work every day, every moment of the day to earn it. My goal is to help you get as far as you can, as quickly as you can. So, I want to thank you for the confidence that you have in me, and I appreciate the opportunity that you've been providing to me. And I'm here, I have an open-door policy. Anybody needs anything, please feel free to avail themselves of me. And I'm going to need all of your help and any questions.
Okay, we have executive session. Resolution is amended. A, Jacqueline Ador Razak, workers' comp. B, Stephen Smith, workers' comp. And C, Adams versus City of Atlantic City litigation. Motion?
Move it. Motion moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
How long, Mr.?
Chang?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
And Small?
No.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. And about how long, please?
Ten minutes.
Council President, we're back on the record, and we have two resolutions for settlement after executive session. Resolution 50 is authorizing settlement for Jacqueline Ador Razak, and 51 is a settlement for Stephen Smith.
I make a motion to re-group Resolutions 15 and 51. Second?
I move it.
Moved by Randolph. Second, second by Shabazz.
Chang?
I'm voting no on 50. 51, yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
No on 50, yes on 51.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
On Resolution 50, we have five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Resolution 51, we have seven in the affirmative.
Move to a jan.
Move it.
All right.